Bill, we're alive, okay?
You are alive.
I would like to call the Planning Commission of December 21st, 2021 to order at 6:30 PM. Can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So, we will do the roll call. Commissioner Huggins, present. Commissioner Johnson, present. Commissioner Freiberger, present. Commissioner Fattisi, present. Commissioner Pennau, present. Commissioners Maddox and Fournette are absent, and they did call in. So, as we start things, has everybody had the opportunity to take a look at the October 19th meeting minutes? And just a quick little note, we did have some issues with the original copy, so it was redrafted. And I did speak with John today, and we're still working on the November 16th meeting minutes, and they will be available at the next meeting in January. So, anybody have any comments on that? It was a multi-page document.
I wasn't there, so I reviewed it, and I wasn't there, so I don't think I vote on it. Is that correct, if you vote on the acceptance?
I'm indifferent. As long as I have three other people here, I'm good.
I understood it.
Okay. Commissioner Freiberger, you're usually very intense on the dotted i's and cross t's. Do you have any comments?
I believe that was the meeting that ended a little bit after nine, and it still says something about 8:24 PM, so...
Yeah, that was a late one.
Didn't we start on the bucko matter at 8:24?
Could be.
I believe so, yes.
Yeah. Now that you say that. Could be wrong.
It was a late one, so our timing might be wrong on that. So, John, do you have any comment on that? Because I, you know, it's kind of like I lose...
I'm looking at my notes.
It was late. I did, it went on.
I do not have in my notes the time that we finished, so I'll just fill it in with the accurate time, and if that's good with the Planning Commission, if you want to approve it with the updated correct time.
What time would you guys like? It was a little bit after nine. So, Planning Commission Discussion Information Items Adjournment, I think that is the final time?
Well, you can get the actual time from the...
Yeah, from the recording.
Yeah, okay. Okay. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, I move to approve the October 2021 minutes.
Do I have a second?
Change.
I'll second that.
We have a second from Commissioner Freiberger. The motion is carried. So, we will now open up the General Public Comments section of the meeting. Now, in this particular case, we don't have anybody in the audience. However, we do have the ability to people to participate in our hybrid model. That would be online or with a write-in. So, let me ask this first. Did we get, Nicole, did we get anyone writing in any commentary on really any matter?
No.
Okay. Is there anyone in our hybrid model bill that you have online?
I see a couple of participants, but I don't see anyone with their hand raised.
Okay. Go in once, go in twice. Okay, I will close the General Public Comments section at 6:35, and I opened it at 6:35. We barely were one minute into that. So, on to the unfinished business section. And John, I'm going to let you start on the review and approve the updated Planning Commission rules and procedures, which I think is great. I haven't, as long as I'm here, this is just a really good document to have for anybody sitting in any capacity, whether it's a chairperson or a planning commissioner as to what the rules kind of are and what the behavior and expected behavior is. So, outside of that one modification we talked about earlier about the...
Yeah, so there's, there's one error right there on the first page under Election of Officers. It says Officers shall be rotated and appointed each year at the, at the commission's last regular meeting of the year. This shall be done by nominating and voting. And then the very next line says, a chairperson and vice chair shall be elected by majority of the commissioners at the first regular meeting of the year.
I had questioned that on...
I was gonna ask about that.
We all did.
So, which is it?
We get to decide. We're gonna talk about it.
The Planning Department doesn't really have a preference, and I've spoken with the mayor, and she doesn't have a preference. I guess the one bit of information that might be useful is the terms end at the end, at, you know, so, you know, this, there's, no, no terms are expiring this year, just randomly, but usually there's at least one, sometimes two commissioners' terms that end at, at the end of the year. So, I don't know, maybe it makes a little bit more sense for us to do elections in the first of the year when we have the newest, when we have a new sitting board of people. It doesn't really, that's just one possible way of doing it. The Planning Commission can do it in July if you wanted to. It's your rules. But it's just one train of thought.
Traditionally, it's been January. I mean, since I've been on, it's always been January. It doesn't matter.
Yeah, I was gonna say the same thing, that as long as I've been on, it's always been January, and sometimes we've neglected to do it, and it's been like February and March.
Right, right.
But almost always January.
Okay, so I will just change in that first sentence. Officers shall be rotated and appointed each year at the commission's first regular meeting of the year.
So, let me ask this question as well. I'm fine with the rotations every year, where in the past, like I said, it's like I think we pushed Pat into the role like three years in a row, and then Eric took over, right? So, anyway, when you spend time doing the chairperson role, there is a little bit of experience that you finally pick up. I think, you know, it took me a good five months by the time I felt really comfortable. Does that preclude who sat as the chair to back up the new chair as a vice chair in the following year? Because we have two other sitting chairman, chairpersons as well, so I think it's kind of important that to keep some kind of continuity, that whoever that new person is, if they're not there and somebody has to have a meeting, that somebody actually sat in this role at some particular point that's comfortable with the procedures and process. Where in this particular case, it says that both I and Eric are not going to be able to fulfill that role in the following year.
It does say that it shall be rotated, so...
Both roles. That's the way I'm reading.
It applies to both roles, yes.
Right, yeah. So, does that mean that the chair can't now be a vice chair because I wasn't sitting in that role prior, but I did the prior year before that? How do we want that to work? And I'm throwing it out there at everybody, I mean...
I mean, I think that you're, you're kind of spot on as far as the continuity and the experience. I mean, it does take a little while. I mean, Robert's Rules isn't always the easiest thing to get a hang of, especially when you're only doing it once a month. You know, I, I don't know if we necessarily have to preclude anybody. I mean, it's our, our Planning Commission, and we can choose to set aside a chairperson if we want after one year or 10 years, and we can choose whoever from amongst us. So, I, I think it's, it should always be up to us, and if we want to reelect somebody, we can reelect somebody.
Yeah, this says we can't. Right, that, that was, that was my point.
But what you were saying, Joe, wasn't it, and maybe I misunderstood, you're just talking about for vice chair, though, so if a new person was nominated as chair, that the former chair would then take over the vice chair? Isn't that what you were kind of...
This is the first time I've seen this, and since I've been here since 2014, this is the first time I've seen it, and we've, at times, well, pretty much most of the time, for instance, like going into 2021, I wasn't aware that I would not be able to throw my ring into the hat because I kind of feel that during COVID, I mean, conducting the people's business from my couch hasn't been the most effective thing for everyone sitting here today, as well as for the public, as well as for pretty much the whole process. So, to just put somebody in a position for a year, and I'm not even saying, you know, COVID was a pretty extreme example, and not having an individual, regardless of who it is, and we elect them, to not have the ability to say, hey, I'd like to have another shot at it or not, this kind of enforces that it's a one-and-done kind of thing, and then, hey, you know. But what, what happens if we have like four brand-new commissioners?
Correct.
Right, it's like, they're not gonna have any background whatsoever, so...
I'd be more concerned about a new planning commissioner coming on who has absolutely no background and is in the learning curve, becoming the, the chair than I would be somebody having it two or three times. If, if the Planning Commission likes the way they run meetings and is happy and keeps reelecting them, at some point, I suppose there would have to be a limit, but, but anyway, I'd be more concerned about somebody who's inexperienced doing, trying to do the job than somebody who, who is experienced trying to do the job.
And that's, go ahead, I'm sorry.
With that being said, can I ask one more question that kind of ties into that, but I'm not sure?
Sure, we have one, absolutely.
So, at the beginning of that paragraph there, it says the Planning Commission consists of seven members with a term of office of six years, but it says when term expires, the mayor appoints new members. So, is that to say that after your six years, you're supposed to be done anyway?
No, that, that, that's a, that's a, that's a good pickup, no.
I agree that it kind of reads like that, but that's not, that's not the intent.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, because I was thinking if you're done in six years anyway, the chair thing probably doesn't make that much of a difference. Okay.
I'm already on my second appointment.
So, that was one of my questions. I wanted to find out for sure about that. So, that isn't how it's supposed to be read, that you do your six years and you're done?
You know, the first thing I caught, it said that we talked about this in November, and honestly, I don't remember talking about this at all.
I mean, we talked about the rules and procedures in general.
We didn't get into the details.
No, we didn't get into...
No, they just handed it out that night of the meeting. John, what are you, I mean, is that something we should change the way that reads?
I'm drafting something right now. What I'm thinking of is when, when terms expire, the mayor shall appoint new, a new member, appoint new members or...
Point, or reappoint?
Or reappoint. Shall appoint or reappoint. Shall appoint new members or reappoint existing members. Is that...
Yeah.
So, the way it'll read is, when terms expire, the mayor shall appoint a new member or, shall, I'm sorry, the mayor shall re, shall appoint a new member...
Or reappoint the current.
Or reappoint existing member.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Joe, I agree with the, I, I think that the sitting chairperson currently should probably carry the vice role the next time, but I'm not so sure that a new person shouldn't be voted in each year as chair. But, I mean, that's just my opinion. I don't know, I mean...
No, everybody gets a say.
Probably don't want to do it anyway, you know, but, yeah.
I just don't think of one-and-done, you know, you know, if there's a term limit, maybe two years, whatever. I'm just saying that it does take a bit of time to get used to the procedures, the process. Like, here's an example, when we had the open, when we had the public hearings last month, people kept going back to the golf course, having nothing to do with the golf course. So, you don't, you want to give everybody their, their fair share and shake, and that's what's kind of nice about the rules and procedures. But it does take a little bit of, you know, a little bit of confidence to just tell people, hey, we need to move on. And that's just one example of what we're dealing with here. Like I said, running things via Zoom was not easy because I can't see people, I can't see body language. It was very difficult to do. So, I was trying to like let people have their say, and then I had comments like, who's running this meeting? I'm like, I'm giving you the opportunity to say something, I can't see you, it's not gonna do any good. So, all I'm saying is I think that a one-and-done, regardless of what happens going forward, me or anybody else, that that might be a little extreme. And it's up to the other people on this commission, too, to say, hey, we want somebody else. I mean, so it's, it's all fair and democratic.
So, if I may offer a suggestion of, excuse me, I have frog in my throat, of just putting out an amendment to strike rotated and, and, you know, that way, if you want it in there, you can just vote against it, and if you don't, then you can vote for it, and then that just gives us the pulse of the commission. And, I mean, for, for me, I feel like it's, the chairman and the vice chairman is the, is purely the prerogative of the commission, and so if they want to choose somebody to run it for a decade and a half, then they have the right to choose that person. And I don't think we necessarily have to artificially limit ourselves in any capacity. That's the whole point of the vote that we have every year. If you don't want them, then you just nominate yourself or somebody else and have a vote.
You take a vote, yeah. And that's what we've done since I've been here, so that's why I looked at this. I was like, okay, well, that's fine, too.
Yeah, when I, when I started, it was who was willing, first of all.
Right, right, we kept putting you in.
Who was, who was willing and who, and who actually could do it, and, and usually it was the same person, and you just got reelected until someone else said, you know, you want to be relieved and...
Right, right, no, no, yeah, yeah.
So, my thoughts on this, I'm not sure what is done at, typically at Planning Commissions, or if it varies a lot in La Conner, they did something similar to what we've done here, I believe, and then they changed it because I think the burden was being on one person year after year to do that. So, this kind of removes that burden. I'm not saying I disagree because I think having somebody who also is comfortable and knows what's going on seems very useful, but it also does mean that everyone has to step up and, and, and to take that role. So, I see positives both ways. I don't know if there's a way to do something in between, kind of. It sounds like maybe that's what people are leaning towards, you know?
The comment I would have on that, whoever sits in this chair, whoever, if they consider this a burden, they shouldn't be sitting here.
Yeah.
Bottom line. I don't consider this a burden. I consider it a responsibility, right? I try and get better at it all the time. Like I said, with COVID and everything, this is only the third or fourth time I'm sitting at this, sitting in council chambers since March of 2020. So, no, this shouldn't be a burden. It should be something that you have a responsibility, and you got to get the job done. Yeah, I get it. But yeah, that's pretty much what, what has happened, I guess, in the past in a lot of different meetings, especially the smaller ones.
Well, I think when you approached me, Pat, you know, you, it was actually you who called me, and you said, you know, I'd, I'd like to be able to shift down a gear and kind of take a little bit of a side seat and not be in the driver's seat with the chairmanship, would you be interested in it? So, I mean, I think that that was a classic example of you ran meetings really well, and if you had wanted to do it, you probably would have continued to...
Yeah, I didn't know how much longer I'd be doing this, and I thought you were somebody that could, could do the job. So, yeah, you seemed like a logical person to approach about...
Yeah, so I mean, and you knew your, you knew your, your limit where, you know, it was time to pass the baton. So, you know, I think that's, it's part of the whole self-governance.
So, if I'm hearing us correctly, the first thing we're gonna do is do the voting in January, not tonight, plus I'm missing two planning commissioners, so I think that makes sense, just from a practicality standpoint.
If I read this correctly, this, these can't be adopted without a full Planning Commission.
Right. It's always in the devil's in the details, right? I think it says quorum, as long as there's a quorum.
It just says quorum.
Quorum must be present.
Just says quorum, yeah.
It was, I think it was if you were to change the person or change the rules that we're working on right now, that had to be done with the full, with the full commission, yeah.
I see.
You know, outside of that, that was the only thing that I saw. I thought everything else was really good. As far as code of conduct, that yes, we do have a responsibility to the city of Seidra Woolley, that there is a code of ethics that is, is really important because we are representative of the city. And then just going through the agenda work sessions, which we haven't done any, I don't believe, in the amount of time I've been here, like separate work sessions for informal studies where we need council approval, but it's nice that there's a piece in there that permits that.
Yeah, I, I really appreciated having these in writing.
Yeah.
You know, it, having been here for a while, I think this is quite possibly the first time that...
That I've seen it.
That we've ever seen it as a body. And I know from being a past chair, especially the public hearing portion, because, you know, I'd be darned if I couldn't find exactly the exact order of presentation, so I never knew exactly when you opened the public hearing, which was always kind of confusing and frustrating as a chair. So, having little details like that is especially helpful in being able to properly facilitate these meetings.
That's what I said. I wish I had this at the beginning of the year.
Yeah, it's really good to lean on regularly.
Mm-hmm. No, I think I'll probably keep this always with my, my iPad.
But it's a code that we're all reading, and everybody understands what the process is, so everybody's on the exact same page.
Mm-hmm.
So, while we were talking about first or last of the year, we elected for first of the year, just for clarity's sake, because, you know, we're talking about procedures, a chairperson and vice person, vice chairperson shall be elected by the majority of the commissioners at the first regular meeting of each year. Quorum must be present to elect the chairperson and vice chairperson. And then I, I recommend adding, the newly elected officers shall assume their role immediately upon...
Hmm, that's a good point. I was wondering about that.
So, then they would run that meeting? Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Unless you prefer to do it otherwise. The other option is, you know, we make the vote earlier, and we specify that it's the next meeting that the person takes over.
Well, it doesn't matter when. I mean, if you vote in January, then you're running, you're running it through January, and then February is the first meeting. If you do it in December, then you're December to December, and your first meeting runs on January. So, it doesn't, it doesn't shorten the year for anybody, it just moves it by a month.
Well, I'm thinking more from a practicality standpoint. So, let's say January comes, right? So, we, we, we do an election. I would say that who's ever sitting here, let them finish the meeting because we could have a whole bunch of other things that are part of the agenda of the meeting and just like sticking somebody in the chair and moving things around, where all of a sudden, it could be something where now that new chair has got to make a vote that's a make-or-break kind of deal.
Yeah, it's a heck of a way to do your first meeting.
I think that would be a little bit unfair to that person, whoever that person would be, whether it's a reelection...
The mayor did that.
The mayor's different. Yeah, the mayor's always...
But the mayor didn't make a tie-breaking vote in the first meeting, so it's not like it's uncommon.
Yeah, I'm just throwing it out there.
Well, it's, it's different. So, this is a topic that comes up regularly, so I'm going to interject with it. The mayor is the eighth elected person. There's a, there's a council of seven, and so the mayor doesn't vote unless there is a need for a tiebreaker. And then there's only certain times when a mayor can vote even. So, this is different. We have seven members, and out of those seven, we have a chairperson instead of like a separate elected body, an eighth person. So, it's a little different. The chair of the Planning Commission can vote and should vote every meeting.
I mean, basically what you're saying is there is no tiebreaker vote. We all vote.
A tie is a loss.
Nobody's vote outweighs anybody else's, and there's seven members, which allows for, you know, a four-to-three vote. If the, if the chair doesn't vote, then it's a three-to-three, could be a three-to-three vote, and that, so it's just looking at it a little different. The chair always votes.
Yeah, and the motion fails if you tie. If it's a three-three, then, then...
If there's only six members and it's three-three, then...
The motion goes down, yeah. Yeah.
So, did we decide if we'd like to have the newly elected officers assume their role immediately or at the next meeting?
The way I'm hearing it, as we're, if we're voting and appointing or whatever in January, they, I know, I feel they should start in February. I do think that the sitting chair...
I agree.
Should finish the meeting.
I agree as well.
Procedural stuff, too. That's, that's fine.
I would say the opposite, but...
Okay.
There's democracy for you.
Danielle hasn't said anything, so it's two-one, three-one. You still got your beat.
Well, I suppose if everybody comes prepared to be voted in as chair, then they could assume that role at that meeting. That's a tough one. Yeah, I think that would, that's doable, so, which, at the same meeting.
So, you know, the interesting thing is, it doesn't really, it's not life or death on this one, so if you guys want to make a vote, we'd like to get these, get these rules and procedure done today so we can move on to the next items.
Yeah.
So, we've, we've added that additional language then of the next meeting then? Yeah?
Is it three-to-two next meeting? Is that what I'm...
I believe it is. It's not to cause any controversy, it's just more like...
All right.
So, I didn't...
We just saved ourselves a whole lot of confusion down the road.
So, back to the elephant, and I, I made this clear, I wouldn't mind throwing my hat and ring for another year, where the way this is written, it's a one-and-done kind of thing. Like I said, this is only like the third time I've sat in a council chamber since March of 2020, and things were pretty upside down. So, taking that opportunity away from somebody, whether it's me, Danielle, or any future individual, you know, I believe that the experience factor should be acknowledged, and whoever sits here to do the Pledge of Allegiance, roll call, and, and things like that should have the opportunity to say, hey, you know, if I'm elected, that's great. If not, hey, I'm still sitting at the table, so...
So, the intent was to keep things moving. Sometimes, you know, personal dynamics really affect voting. Some people are afraid to vote their conscience or don't want to be mean to somebody to, you know, if they, you know, would prefer somebody else to be chair but don't want to rock the boat. So, it's really intended to kind of level the playing field to have somebody to have the roles rotate. The way this is written, I don't interpret it to say that, say if you're vice chair one year, you couldn't be chair the next year, and then couldn't go back to vice chair the year after that. So, that was where we kind of started with this, so I'm trying to tackle several of the issues. The, you know, the way it's written, people could bop back and forth from chair to vice fair, vice chair, which helps alleviate some of the, you know, if there's only so many willing members. But it does, it does encourage some change.
Probably doesn't also exclude you from doing it one year as a chairman and then just walking away... just walking away for a year and then coming back a year later after a one-year hiatus and running, throwing your hat in the ring again. So.
I would agree with that.
I look at it differently, and I'll tell you why. Anybody sitting at this table up here, you should have the confidence to know what you want to do and not worry about hurting feelers and all this other thing. We're all adults here and we're, we're entrusted with a massive responsibility. So part of that responsibility is sticking people in seats that you need to vote your conscience and say, okay, I think this person can do a, whoever it is, it doesn't matter who it is. But to sit and have to worry about personal feelings at this particular level right here, I don't think that that should have anything to do with anything. We have a much bigger responsibility than that. If somebody doesn't like me personally, whatever, you know, that, that, that's silliness. We have to function as a group here and get really important business done for this city. And that's the way I look at it. Just doing like a one-year kind of thing and hey, you do a one year and you're gone. Well, you're really just getting your, your feet wet really after a year. Just, just saying. It's, it's not that simple. And again, it's up to the individuals on this commission to decide, hey, who they, they want sitting in this seat and leading the pledge of allegiance at the end of the day. And it's just what my experience here is it as well. I mean, like I said, the only other commissioners I know are Pat and Eric. So these rules didn't apply in the, in the past. So it kind of surprised me that Tagamet.
Well, we, we live in a more litigious age than we did when I started, but, but it's never come up as an issue. I don't know of, no one's ever been wanted, that I know of, has ever, they've ever wanted to vote off. No one's ever taken the job who didn't want the job.
Yeah, right.
And no one has ever said, hey, you've been on there twice. You shouldn't have a third go. So, but I realize that we live in a more litigious age where maybe I've got to cross all the Ts and dot all the Is or something. But.
So I'm going to make a motion to strike rotated and from the rules of procedures under organization of the planning commission, election of officers.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a second from Commissioner Huggins. We'll take a vote. Those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
We have three aye. No, and those not in favor?
I mean, I still feel a little discussion on that because I feel like if it says rotated, it doesn't, well, I think it should be worded differently. I don't think that it necessarily needs to be rotated more than, oh, how do you say that?
We're just saying it comes down to a vote of everybody here.
Yeah.
That's all that's saying. We're just pulling that language out.
Okay. Then I'm okay with that.
Okay. So we got four yesses and one no.
Who said no?
Danielle. Okay, moving on.
Well, we still have to
Go ahead.
Yep, still have to vote on the whole.
You know, we've made some major changes, so I'm going to bring this back to the next, to the next meeting for you to make an official vote on so I can get a clean copy.
Perfect. That's fine. Oh, I wasn't ready to sign this tonight. No, 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 I get it. That's fine. And these are changes, absolutely. And it's good to have all these written out. Like I said, this is the first time I've seen this since 2014. I think it's great. Because it provides clarity for regardless of what we're doing from a process standpoint.
So that brings us to the next item on the agenda then. Would you, on the agenda was to elect a new chairperson or vice chair, but let's, let's do that in January. And so that leaves us with the, the big ticket item for tonight's agenda.
Okay, why don't you start the intro on that? Because this is our second time that we're, second or probably third time we're looking at this. That's the second time in detail.
Yeah, there was an introduction in September and then October, we discussed it. And then we took a month off because last month we worked just on, the planning commission just worked on the, the 2021 docket. So this is the requested amendments to the parking regulations in the urban village. Mixed use continued. So the planning commission had a pretty thorough discussion about this and received a lot of input from the developers that were requesting this change. The planning commission had asked for, you know, some of the details that the developers had presented. And so those have been included in this application or in this memo. In addition to the original request, which was a joint request from the RJ Group and the BYK construction to amend the existing parking regulations in the urban village mixed use overlay, they submitted additional info that is in attachment five. The planning commission was interested in how the parking layout actually looked. So that has been included. Some drawings of the BYK proposal showing the, the amount of parking that they're providing and a letter from BYK, as well as a follow-up email from Scarlett Ponder of the RJ Group that added some additional information that they had brought up during the oral testimony. In addition, at the last meeting, BYK pointed out that, well, Paul, Paul Woodmancy of BYK, not BYK itself, but Paul Woodmancy pointed out the Burlington Municipal Code that there are some allowances for shared parking uses between commercial and residential uses in certain zones. And so that's, that code is under attachment four of your memo. It's chapter 17.85 of the Burlington Municipal Code and is specifically section 070. And so there is one example of a local jurisdiction that allows some shared parking. Now, there's lots of nuances there that I addressed to an extent in the page four of, one, two, three, four, in page four of the memo. Where it's a, the Burlington parking regulations found in 1785 070. That's the most, so the most relevant section that I saw in there is for residential uses, sharing parking with a retail sales and service use. And then they specify that retail sales and service does not include lodging uses, eating and drinking establishments, or entertainment uses. So the way you read it is, if a residential use shares parking with a retail sales and service use, the parking requirement for the residential use may be reduced by 30% providing that the reduction does not exceed the minimum parking requirement for the retail sales and services use. So I listened to the minutes several times. What Paul had said was, was the opposite. It doesn't really matter. He'd said that the, the parking requirement for the commercial use could be reduced. But in fact, it's the residential may be reduced. It doesn't really matter. It's kind of six of one, half dozen of another. However, it goes on to state that it, the reduction does not, shall not exceed the minimum parking requirement for the retail sales and surface area. So it can't go less than what the retail use is, which in that case would be the lower. So.
You know, I looked at your analysis, and that was the first thing that caught my eye was Burlington. Because that's exactly opposite of what the issue is here. The problem is residential overflow. And I could tell you firsthand, and I keep saying this, downtown 48, which I happen to live at, is a perfect example of a UVMU. And I have just even memos from their own property manager of the residences overflowing into the commercial. The commercial's not the problem. If we're going to put the high density on the residential side, that's where the overflow is happening. I mean, we overflow out on Rita Street. We overflow into the commercial sides, and it causes all kinds of problems. So my issue has never been with the commercial. In different jurisdictions, depending on who it is, like for instance, Mount Vernon, on their commercial side, when they look at parking requirements for commercial, they base it upon the type of business that is deployed in that space. For instance, restaurants have more space requirements than, let's say, an accounting office. And here we just have a one-size-fits-all. So in this particular case on Burlington, where we'd cut down on the number of parking spots available to preserve the commercial side, it's the total opposite when we did the UVMU, allowing such a very significant amount of housing. And the last thing I heard from the RJ Group was they were working with the, the school district because that's where the kids park for the fields, and you're still going to get overflow coming out of that project. But, no?
I looked, I looked, I looked into that, and there's, there was no agreement. Rob said that there was an agreement.
Oh, okay.
There's no agreement.
Okay. So you would know that.
You know, there's, you bring up a good point that I'd like to clarify.
No, no, I'm sorry.
So there's two requests here on the table from, in their request. One is to allow parking agreements, which would be, you know, something like a shared use with, with the neighboring parking lot. We already allow for that.
Mm-hmm.
So if there was, say, if there was a parking, parking lot across the street for the school district. Currently, our code does allow for shared parking agreements. So we could, you know, the planning director has the ability to say, oh, yeah, it looks like there's additional parking there. And you can, you can come up with an agreement with the school district per se, for example. That's different than what this request is, which is to allow for a reduction in parking. So we already allowed for the shared. This is to allow for the reduced in the manner that Burlington allows. In addition, they're also asking for the city to allow on-street parking to count towards
Count towards there.
And, you know, staff very much against that. So, sorry to sidetrack
Don't apologize.
the train there.
So the BYK project is very different than the RJ Group project. And I did talk to Paul on this. His situation on his parking, where his project is out on Stendal and, and Trail, just the way it lays out, it was his commercial stuff that he had to like kind of squeeze in, where the RJ project, they got plenty of space to accommodate the parking in the code. So I didn't understand why they were both coming at it as a one-size-fits-all, where there are two very different and distinct differences between the projects, the composition, where it's at. So, so that was just my identification of what the animals are. They're not the same, is what it really comes down to at the end of the day.
So we provided the, the information that the developers wanted to get to the planning commission. We think that, we hope that, you know, the information that they provided was something that the planning commission was asking for them to provide, and hopefully that provides some clarity. We need to have a, a public hearing on this before the planning commission makes any votes. So today was, it was not a good time, the two days before Christmas, to hold a public hearing.
No.
That's, it's just planning policy to not do that. So it was an opportune time to schedule a public hearing. Otherwise, we probably could go down that road today. But we didn't choose to do so. So I do anticipate having the public hearing on this the next time. The only thing that I think, unless the planning commission has specific questions or discussion points or wants to, anything they, I don't mean to cut off your discussion, so you're welcome to discuss as long as you like. If the planning commission does want to have, say, make changes to their proposal before taking a vote on it, that would be good to get out today before we have the public hearing so that people can review before there's a planning commission vote on it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Yeah, I, I would like to propose a, an alternative way of handling the, the issue to the commission. I'm not sure if this is the right time, but I want to make sure that we have time to
You have this one. Go ahead. Absolutely.
Okay. So, yeah, I'm glad we finally got all this information from all in one place from both the city and the developers. Because reading through it, it really made it clear in my mind that both, both sides feel like they're being short, short-changed by, by the agreement. The city's going to get what they want, or the developer's going to get what they want. And ultimately, the customers and the tenants of the buildings are going to lose. They're the ones that really end up losing in the end. And so I got to thinking of, of a different way to, to approach this. And, and so anyway, this is what I came up with. And this is just my talking points. And I'm not a code writer, so I'm happy to help write this if this seems like a workable thing. My idea is that the city wants to avoid a future parking scarcity nightmare and to provide a livable city. Developers want more square footage for development, amenities, and profitability. Customers and tenants want easy parking and amenities that are stimulating and pleasing. The reality is that somebody always gets short-changed, or we all get short-changed. So that, that's kind of the, the ground we're on right now with, with this thing with either the on-street parking deal or reducing the amount of spaces they have to do and all of that. Somebody gets short-changed in it no matter what happens. My, my what-if scenario is, what if developers dedicated a percentage of the city's required parking square footage? So whatever the city is requiring them of spaces in square footage, and I'm just guessing at this, I'm saying a third, 30% or something, as just an example to get us through this. So if you took that 30% of what the city is requiring them to put in in parking, and, and dedicate it as what I came up with quickly as parking slash amenities, okay? So now you've got, you've got a piece of, of a percentage of square footage in the parking requirement that has to either be in parking, or it has to be an amenity for the, for the development. In exchange for that, the developer would get maybe, and I just threw these out just because these are in contention, one, they would maybe get some of the on-street parking, don't shut me down yet, John, please, or additional affordable housing units that they can stick in as long as it doesn't change the square footage. So that basically gives them two more profitable units because we're giving them the opportunity to have two more affordable housing units as a sweetener for, for doing this, this system. The, this square footage would be flex space that must be used for either parking or amenities at all times in perpetuity. Okay? So the way it works is, and here's, here's the talking points again. The city gets its projected parking need, what it thinks parking need, what it thinks is going to need for parking in the future, or possible future amenities, okay? It's going to be one or the other. So the city gets a win-win. The developer gets either the on-street parking, or the opportunity to change the use from parking to an amenity if parking needs go down in the future. So say after build-out plus five years, or build-out plus 10 years, they can prove that they're not using 30% of their parking spaces, they can turn that into an amenity or something.
What are you talking about amenities? Give us examples of an amenity.
I don't know, half-court, half-court for kids to play basketball on, a kiosk for, I'm trying to spread it around and not just make it park stuff, a kiosk for, you know, whatever, batteries for your cellphone, okay? Or whatever they see, whatever the city and the developers agree on as an amenity to the, there's things that have to be worked out in here, there's no doubt about it. But the scenario I'm working on is just that everybody gets a win-win out of this, okay? Because the developer either gets some of the on-street parking, or all theirs, or they get the opportunity to flip back and forth and either use it as part of their development and other than parking, or if the need changes later, then it comes back out of amenities and back into parking. The main thing is, is that the city has the space. Once you build a building on something, it's really hard to get it back for parking needs or whatever. This makes it so that it's a flexible space, can be used either way, and the, now I'm getting off in the weeds. Let me just finish the talking points real quick, and then I'll answer your questions. So what the tenant gets out of it is either easier parking or better amenities, okay? The tenant or the customers that come to the area. What the community gets is, the community either gets a more livable city, better parking and/or more amenities, and possibly more dedicated affordable housing units. So everybody gets a win in this. You just have to tweak out the details for how it works. Versus this either-or thing, where the city and the developer are battling back and forth over, oh, but we want to build a livable place with walkable cities and blah, blah, blah. Well, that's all dreams. That may or may not happen. There's no evidence that I've seen that people are getting out of their cars. They may be switching from gas-powered cars to electric cars, but they still want personal motivation vehicles. So we still have to plan for the fact that cars are going to be around, or some kind of personal vehicles that got to be parked are going to be around, and so we have to provide for that, those parking spaces. If in the future, under my thing, if you prove that people really are getting out of their cars, and it's not going to be an issue, now you can take some of that parking space and turn it into an amenity, or something that helps the developer make more money, make his place more saleable, you know, there's probably even ways they can make money on it directly, but it's still not just another building with another house on it. And then, like I said, the community gets more affordable housing possibly, and the community gets a more walkable, better situation. But there's no downside that I can see, because you're either going to get good parking, or you're either going to get parking, and it'll be easier to park, or you're going to get more amenities, one way or the other, so.
I hear you, but here's the problem.
There's always problems.
Okay, well, no, this is the reality. This UVMU that we did, and the parking requirements on it are pretty darn minimal, okay? Because here's what happens. You have people in a one-bedroom apartment, there's two cars, okay? You have people that come to visit people. You have people with teenage kids. We didn't even spec any overflow parking in this. This is about as small as you get.
Oh, you don't have to sell me on that. I'm already in that camp.
Because I'm living it now.
I would require more parking if I could, based on need.
So reducing anything based upon these minimums here, on the residential side, I'm not saying that, there is definitely an ebb and flow. If anything, I would be in favor of is taking a look at the commercial requirements, because during the day, definitely people are out of their apartments. I mean, in just an example of my place, and not using COVID as an example, everybody was home. That's not the case, although I don't know what's going to happen in the next three weeks. But anyway, in a normalized environment, people do go out during the day, and there's always plenty of parking.
Well, this is all aside from that. This is...
But we still need to do the calculation, and when you start getting into affordable housing, it depends on what you're looking at, depends on the jurisdiction.
Well, some of the solutions for, some of the solutions that the cities are coming up with for doing the two scenarios that exist already, which are, like I said, are like this to each other, are that they have to keep counts, the developer or the city has to go out and enforce parking. I mean, I'm just starting to scratch the surface of all the negatives of that. The only negative to a developer of this is that they might once a week have to take a snapshot of their parking lot and put in some kind of a computer log how many empty spaces there were in their thing, and after 10 years, they can say, you know, we never ever filled this parking lot, we always had 40 spaces left, can we turn that into an amenity?
Okay, on that thought, okay, everything is, changes over time. Where this is a baseline, based upon what we know is the reality at this particular point. So maybe defining a process that every three years, whoever the ownership group is of a UVMU project, now has the ability to come in and say, based upon your criteria of how we calculate parking, we feel that we're in excess of it based upon these different factors.
Well, that's exactly what this is, yeah.
But starting a baseline, as in like ground zero?
The baseline is whatever the city decides is their projected parking need for the area over time, and you...
But you just brought it...
But once you put a building on it or something, then there's no way to get it back.
People aren't getting out of their cars. And out here in Seadrwaile, you need cars. We're in the middle of nowhere, kind of.
So what I, the way I understand Mr. Huggins's idea, we'll call it.
Yeah, it's just an idea.
We'll call it an idea.
It's an idea that hopefully, that has not been tried, that actually might work someday.
And so what you're proposing is not changing the parking requirements as they are right now.
That's correct.
But adding to it saying, if after X number of years of study and proof, evidence from the developer, we create a system that says the developer can, if they demonstrate that they haven't been filling up that parking lot, they tell us how much they haven't been filling it up by, then they could apply to the city...
That's what I just said.
To reduce, that's what he said, to reduce the parking requirement...
That's correct.
...to be used for other uses that could either be...
Open space, kiosks, the kind of things that you could take down, again, if you ever, 15 years, say, say that's 10 years from now, 15 years from now, suddenly, there's some reason why we're parking a bunch of stuff again, then they might want to revert it back to parking. Maybe parking is more important than the open space at that point.
Right, in the future, at some future date.
It's flexible space that's either parking or amenities at any time.
So I think that's very, that's a very understandable concept. I got a little thrown off when you threw in affordable housing units, because that's also another way of doing it. So I was thinking...
That was if we needed some kind of a sweetener. I don't like those things, but if it's a, I mean, I like affordable housing. What I meant is, I don't like sweeteners, but if a sweetener is what it took to get them onboard, I thought the on-street parking is something that could be negotiable, or the other would be giving them an extra two units, as long as they were affordable housing.
Affordable housing is not a sweetener, and I'm going to tell you exactly why, because I deal with it. So I just listed some property right outside the brand-new 185th Light Rail Station, okay? Shoreline has a 20% requirement for affordable housing based upon 60% average of King County wages. So here's the thing, the developer now has to put below, the same size, no different, but it's below market rates, okay? So it's not a sweetener for them, because they're making less money.
Well, it is in this case, because if they were, if they were going to have 98 units, and two of them had to be affordable housing, and we just gave them two more units, and they could be affordable housing, then they just got two more that they can charge the whole full amount for, so it's a huge sweetener for them.
So wait, so you're saying that they can have a one-bedroom at 400 square feet versus a one-bedroom at 700 square feet?
I'm just saying that if they had 90, if all they could get into their thing was 98 units, and we give them two more units for doing the thing...
It doesn't work like that.
They now have 100 units, and they still have two that are affordable or whatever.
There's a different composition when you're doing multi-unit buildings. You've got studios exactly like we have here, ones, whatever, and the way the code is in other jurisdictions, it's still the same size unit. There's not any more.
I'm not talking about size, I'm just talking about a concept that gives wins for everybody. All these details have to be worked out, okay? I thought of this two hours ago, as I was reading the parking plan, and said, hey, what? You know what, there's another way this could be done. So are there things that need to be fixed? But what John said is correct. We don't have to, we don't have to change the existing parking requirements. All we have to do is come up with a mechanism that allows them to sign in on the, it has to be parking, or it has to be amenities, one or the other, and it can flip-flop.
There's examples out there of other jurisdictions. You know what they do when they put affordable housing in? They reduce the amount of open space.
This says you can't do that. My thing says that you, that they have to, you're giving them the right to do it, but they have to do it within the existing, within the existing footprint of what they...
It complicates all the time.
You can't do the sliding thing like they did out at, with us out at...
Changes, depending on where you're at.
Cleaner Estates, where every time we said, well, you got to do this, then they said, well, then we're going to just take some more space out of your open space.
Let me offer something that I'm picking up in this conversation. So right now, we've got the UVMU rules that were intended to allow a bunch of extra residential use in, as a sweetener, to get people to build retail and commercial restaurant space in the mixed commercial zone. That's why we did the UVMU. We put a huge sweetener in there. We have two developers that have actually pulled applications to do so. So obviously, it is sweet enough. Now, you know, they're coming back, they're doing their projects, now they're asking for...
Yeah, more concessions.
More concessions.
That's what developers do.
So this is their request.
Yeah. So like I said, it's just an idea, but...
I think it's a good idea, I think this is a good idea to, you know, like your idea and several other ideas, but I'm concerned about adding additional housing, additional units.
Well, let's not do that, then. Just say, do the 30% thing, if you want to be involved, and you want to have some say in your land, then you got to do the 30%, or whatever percentage you decide on. And don't give them the sweeteners. I mean, I just toss that in as things that you could do. It's all, it's all flexible, so. Anyway, and I'm not saying you have to do it. Again, it was just an idea that popped into my head, that seemed like it didn't take a lot of zoning changes and meetings and whatnot to sort out the little details.
So out of curiosity in your idea, so it would start out as parking?
It has to start out as parking, because it's meeting the city's existing parking requirement for them in the thing. They have to prove at some point in the future, a build-out plus so many years, that that parking wasn't necessary, and now they can put it into amenities for the buildings. Not more units, more amenities. It could be stuff that makes money for them or not, and then that gives them the option later, if they ever needed to, to tear it out and do parking.
So in a way, you know, you're allowing them to have their say, and then you say, okay, great, prove it.
Yeah, yeah. Just show us how it's, you know, and it's giving them some flexibility with what they do with it. It's not letting them just throw up two more units somehow and making more money that way, but they can put in an amenity that maybe draws people, or they may be able to put in an amenity that just makes, that their tenants have been asking for, that wasn't there in the original thing because of the parking or whatever, and now you can put it in, because you didn't need that much space, and you proved it.
So what that recommendation would do is say to them, thank you for your proposal to, you know, allow reduced parking. The planning commission's considered it, and if you went that way, you would say, we're going to say no to what you've proposed. However, we would be interested, we would propose a plan that says, you know, in five or 10 years, whatever the planning commission, if you want to discuss this idea further, in five or 10 years, you can, if you show evidence that there's been extra parking, we'd reconsider, you know, we'd allow you to use that, but only for open space or some other amenities, that isn't a permanent building.
Yeah, exactly. You nailed it.
Isn't building space.
Yeah.
It's an interesting concept.
Because that was in their own wording. In their own wording, they said that they were having to cut back on amenities, open space, because of the parking, so now you can get it back.
You know, another way to do it is to revisit the UVMU parking requirements in five or 10 years, and see how it's bore out after several years of it being used.
And we should do that all the time, by the way, absolutely. It's always good to revisit code to say, is this working, not working? Yeah.
That's the easier way, that way we're not changing code now.
Right. Yeah, I was a builder once. I don't want to build stuff that's never going to get used, or was totally overbuilt and unnecessary, but...
Let me throw something else out there as well, because this is the reality of it, okay? There's only X amount of floor area ratio in any project, regardless. So it's the developers that are deciding what their unit composition is. It's not adding or subtracting units. There's only X amount of space that you could put walls, hallways, common areas in, period. What people could do is, hey, give me an 1,100-square-foot two-bedroom, and I can only put X amount of those in the building, which I will require less parking. So it's all up to how they pencil things out, as to how much square footage they can actually utilize, and what is the market going to bear.
Right.
But as far as our parking density requirements for what we did for this code, like I said, we didn't even do any overflow parking. And I think what we're going to find is, when we get started here, and if they're successful in, let's say, getting a 95% occupancy rate, you've got friends that come by, you've got people that visit, you're going to be out on the street anyway.
Think of this as, you know, you're in a poker game, and this is the call. My solution is the call. Just show us your cards, you know? After five years, were you right, or were we right?
That makes sense.
Did parking need go up, or did parking need go down? Because we're happy to let you use it for something different if it went down. You know, if transit really got better, and people really did get out of cars, or where everybody's finally priced out of cars, or whatever the heck happens, then that space should go for something else.
Absolutely. Revisiting code to see if it's working, not working, and talking to the powers out there that are actually spending the money as to why or why not it's working. We want to hear them, absolutely, yeah, sure. And it should be a process, absolutely.
And that would kind of help you and the planning department, because I know you guys are really busy. I mean, remembering to do something 10 years down the road may not be the easiest thing in the world, but if a developer comes to you and says, hey, it's been that 10 years, I'm applying, that triggers you guys as like, oh yeah, planning commission needs to revisit the parking element of this.
Yeah, that's the easiest way for staff.
Mm-hmm.
So maybe we should just kind of get a gut-check feel of how the planning commission feels about just the BYK proposal to allow the changes, the proposed changes to... I've heard a lot of, I've heard a lot from the planning commission, but I haven't heard, like, really, where you think you're going to go with it.
Now, correct me if I'm wrong, and I did talk to Paul. So it's only eight spots that he's talking about, that actually he has to build out on the street. He's got to cover up that ditch, and he's actually got to basically build the parking spots, and he only wanted it to apply to the commercial side of it, because you're going to have entries along trail, and everything, so people can park there, and they can walk straight into the businesses. Is that, was that your understanding as well?
So, you know, that's public parking.
Right. Well, he's creating the public parking. I think that was his take on it.
It's also creating the need for it.
Yeah, no, no. Listen, I'm just throwing it out there. I'm just being a parrot right now, that's all.
Well, I question if, I think just about any developer, putting in anything, especially something of this size, are usually required to help with the infrastructure of the city as well, whether it be fix a road, put in parking. I'm totally against allowing him to have that on-street parking.
No, it's actually including his calculation, they're going to put that in anyway.
Right.
You just don't want to make a part of his calculation.
I don't think that he should be able to make it a part of his calculation. That I'm completely against. I like Pat's idea of giving him kind of... I like Pat's idea of giving them kind of, if you don't use it in 10 years, but I, I don't think that's something that they're gonna appreciate. I think that they want their stuff now or never, and I'm going never. So there's my opinion. I'm good with the way we've set our parking regulations.
I'm with Commissioner Penno on this one. I think just because you don't know if that developer is going to still own the property in 10 years, I guess maybe that wouldn't make a difference. But, John, I wanted to ask for clarification. So the Exhibit C, the required landscape plan after code review where they added in the parking, so that means that what they had in the way of green space achieved the, the requirements. It just wasn't as much as they were hoping to put in.
Wait, I'm, I'm not following Exhibit C?
Ah, down at the very end of, almost
Is it Attachment C?
Attachment C.
Yes.
So, Attachment Three?
Attachment Three.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, so it's like the fourth page from the bottom, but
Fourth page from the bottom?
It's one of the drawings, yes.
Those are from BYK?
Yes, yes, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's showing the reduction, the 23%, but they're still meeting the, the requirement for landscaping. So, so the argument is that they could provide more, but at the cost of the parking that was required to be put in.
So, if they didn't put the, well, so, they're framing it as additional parking that was required. You know, their original proposal, they didn't have enough parking, so we said you needed to provide more parking. So, to meet our current code.
But the landscaping also still meets the code.
But the, yeah, like, we wouldn't, yeah, the landscaping still needs to meet the criteria of the UVMU code also. And Exhibit C meets both parking and open space requirements and landscaping requirements. They just, I think what Paul Woodmancy was saying is they could have had more open space.
Yes, yes. I just wanted to clarify that.
But it still meets the, the, the requirements of the UVMU code with all of the necessary parking.
Yes.
Which just goes to show, you know, the planning commission put a lot of work into that sliding scale of, you know, if you get the 35 units per acre, you, you gotta provide more open space. And if you provide, if you provide 20 units per acre, you, you can do less open space. So it made sure that if there is a, a bigger development, that there was equally, you know, sort of a sliding scale, more open space. And what we've seen is that both applicants chose to go for close to the maximum number of units and the minimum amount of commercial space.
Of course they did.
Yeah. They gotta park cars, exactly. And it's the residential side that is gonna be the biggest utili, utilization of all that, that parking space. But then again, during the day, there's gonna be a lot of open space, so parking spots because people are gonna be gone. So, that, that should be what we should be focusing on right now.
Yeah, so that 23% reduction is just what they wanted to provide.
Right.
It's a 23% reduction of what they wanted to provide, not a 23% reduction in what's required.
And, and as was already said, that, that street parking is just one of those things that is required improvements when something like this goes in. That's not, and especially if we don't have really overflow parking, that could serve as that. But if you have it designated for specific things, not even ignoring staff saying that, you know, it could be seen as gifting of public property, which is also an issue, so.
So anytime a development happens along an unimproved road,
Right.
Like, there's, the road's improved, but the, the curb gutter sidewalk parking wasn't. So any development, whether it's in the UVMU or in the R5 zone,
Right, doesn't matter.
Is required to do half-street improvements in front of their property. We have a method of waiving that for single-family homes when it really, you know, it would be the only section of sidewalk for the whole block, you know, then the, the public works department will waive that. But for larger projects like this, you know, they, they, there's no mechanism to waive it. And as part of that, they require on-street parking if there's enough right-of-way. And there is here, so that's why they're being required to put on-street parking there.
For the record, you know, Paul in his letter talked about how there was no mechanism in the city to monitor the on-street parking issues. I mean
I think you said any parking issues.
Talking about that overflow next to Eon Marina.
But, I mean, at the same time, we do have a code enforcement officer, so there is a mechanism that we specifically went out and got for certain issues like this. So, you know, that, that's not true. You know, I am flatly against the on-street parking counting towards their parking for the project. I, I find Pat's concept really intriguing. I, I would be interested in exploring it. I would be somewhat, somewhat open to the concept of the shared parking idea, although I would say that I kind of lean against it. I feel kind of like what we've said earlier today, that we've already provided the minimum amount of parking necessary. And, you know, I realize that their bottom line is their bottom line, but, you know, they were also, you know, untethered and fully allowed to participate in all of this, and more than any other project that I think we've worked on. And, you know, I don't feel like any other concessions are necessarily, you know, needed. And to come at us stating that, like, this is an oversight of ours and we don't know that the code doesn't meet the intent that we set out for is, quite frankly, a little bit insulting, considering that we all worked on this really hard for a very long time. So, you know, would I be willing to move forward with the concept of the shared parking? Yes, but I'm not really at all, at this time, looking to add the on-street parking mechanism.
Anyone else?
If I could just jump in here again. So, the, the shared parking was something I've been thinking about. It's an interesting idea, but, John, when you said that, that 30%, so we already have something in place for shared parking, but that doesn't offset the requirement? Is that what you're saying? That's how that's different here? Obviously, there's also individual agreements specific, that they're suggesting specific between retail or business and residential, but just trying to confirm the ways this is different because
Okay. So I'm gonna ask Nicole to do something really quick to help with that. So, would you go through the existing UVMU code? It's in here somewhere. And, and look for, I guess you could use this one too, since it shows the, I talked, it talks about shared parking in here. I just, I've been poring through, I can't find it right now as well, so listening. So, my recollection is that we already allow for some use of shared parking between different properties, more or less, in here. So, I'm looking for where that is to, so I can then explain the difference between what our shared parking allowance is already in here and what, and what they're proposing.
Possibly 172180. Their suggested changes look like they just add on to the third paragraph that talks about shared parking.
Oh, okay, so, yeah. I'm 1721080, under A, the third paragraph. So, it already says, "New development may utilize a shared parking arrangement subject to review and approval by the planning director." And that's where it would stop.
And that's pretty vague.
It is pretty vague.
I remember that, too.
What that, what that intent was, was meant to be shared between different properties. Say there was an underutilized parking lot in an adjacent parcel. That's what the shared parking agreement that we intended
They don't really have anything like that there. It's
So, they're piggybacking on it because there's not anything like that that is out there, as Commissioner Penno said. So, they're piggybacking by changing the definition of shared parking, which actually, frankly, is, is necessary, I think.
With, with their commercial, that they have to supply, and, and then their residential. They want to be able to allow their commercial parking to be residential parking in the night.
Right.
And commercial parking during the day.
The way they're defining shared parking is overlapping between different uses based on a timeframe.
So potentially, they would be offsetting 30% with that shared, but they still would be providing it, so to speak, but it would just be time-sensitive essentially. It would, it would have to, it would be dependent on, on people not all using it at the same time of the day.
Except for, I don't think there's a 30%
No. And, and I think that they wanted to take away some residential parking in
That was in the Burlington code, so I just, I don't know
Right.
If they're asking for that, that was just
So it just goes to show that, you know, the proposed language is still not clear. One thing that I've learned from this is that, you know, I should, I should describe with our, what our intent, shared parking under that existing 1721080, is just allowing them to interpret it in their own way.
You want to hear an example of exactly what happens? So anyway, I always use the downtown 48 as an example because it kind of is exactly what this is. So this was from the property manager, and it had to do with the residences parking on the commercial side. Like I said, during the day, there, there's additional space outside of the commercial space for parking if they have overflow or more clients coming in on the commercial side. "Hope you had a great weekend. Here is another reminder for all of you in bold. Please do not park in front of the Seadron Building. This includes weekends as they have employees around the clock. They have sent me pictures of vehicles and they will be subject to towing at your expense." This is what happens. It's the residential side that causes the, the volume of people parking for a whole bunch of different reasons. But during the day, is there additional parking for the commercial guys to come over to the residential side? Yeah, because they do it all the time. But we got space for it, so nobody complains about it. But God forbid, these people don't have their cars out of there by 8:00 in the morning, now you're gonna be subject to tow, including the weekend. So the calculations we have are correct. They really are. So our numbers are good. So, I look at this as UVMU 1.0, right? We're talking about how code needs to reflect the reality of the times. This is a good baseline. This is all good baseline stuff based upon reality. So, what we're looking at here, we should just stick to what we have right now and just see how it plays itself out when these projects go in. And I'm excited to see what they're doing. They're doing some really good stuff, and people are making an investment in this community. I want to see those commercial businesses rocking, just like I'm looking at downtown during the day right now. It is packed, and I am loving it. I don't want to see vacant commercial space. But this is really good baseline stuff, especially on the parking side. Like I said, we didn't even spec overflow parking on this. And you're gonna see cars going out to the street on the weekend, because that's all they're gonna have the ability to do. You're always gonna have comings and goings, especially on weekends. I mean, who does a Super Bowl party by themselves?
So, they have left it, though, vague enough to say that, subject to the planning director's discretion, it would be, basically, it sounds like individual agreements between specific businesses. I think the challenge would be the, again, the residential,
Yeah.
Because, you know, people have extra vehicles that they don't drive to work every day.
Teenage kids, there's a whole bunch of things, yeah.
So, our code also in here specifically says that there can't be shared, that there's no reduction, no overlap for commercial and residential, so
So then we'd have to change that if, in order to, we couldn't just add that in there, so.
Parking for commercial uses shall be provided in addition to residential
Right.
Parking requirements. And that was something that the planning commission was very clear about, and that's why I remember it. And that, that's the, I mean, that's the fly in the developer's ointment is, you know, they want to get around that, and the planning commission very succinctly put it in there. So, that's why this whole proposal is challenging, because I know it is, runs a little bit afoul of what the planning commission really intended. So, I guess what I was trying to get from the planning commission is, are you even interested in seeing any reduction in the parking?
I, I won't vote for anything that reduces the required amount of parking based on anything I've seen. Information about parking, projected needs, or the developers, nothing would get me to reduce the amount of parking that is required at this point.
I, I agree with that, yeah, nope.
We're, we're, what you're saying is keeping it the way we have it, and basically, their proposal
I'm, I'm asking if you're at all interested in their proposal and the way that it
I am in no way into their proposal.
Reduces the parking requirement.
No.
My, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I'll just kind of randomly
Yeah, I'm, I'm trying to make sure I'm saying the right
Planning commission members.
My recollection from our joint mayor council and planning commission meeting back in September, they were beyond crystal clear that parking is an issue and we, we need to make sure that we accommodate enough of available space for it. So, so that's where I'm leaning. And looking at our calculations, I thought we were very generous, actually, on the UVMU, especially on the residential side, as to how we spec that, so.
And I
Kirk, do you have?
I mean, in general, no, I'm, I'm not really interested in reducing the parking requirement. You know, I, I have kept myself open to the shared reduction I, concept, but they have yet to prove anything to me that has made me convinced that that is the way to go and that we need to do that. Otherwise, I feel like what we have already written is sufficient.
Danielle, you were gonna say something, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry. And as was already brought up, it's not like we can't revisit this in 10 years after we've seen this play out and seen whether those parking spaces that are public parking wind up being overflow for the businesses and the, you know, whatever there, and, and then looking at that and saying,
We'll know in three years.
Are they using all of their designated parking?
We'll know a lot sooner than that. We'll know if we nailed it or we didn't.
Yeah.
So, thank you for indulging my sort of informal poll there, because that's really my feel from the planning commission, is we've had a lot of discussion, but yet the discussion seems to continually say, well, thank you for your proposal, we're not interested. So, I just want to kind of clear the path for this to move forward. If the planning commission really isn't interested in this proposal as such, then, you know, we can have a, a public hearing on it and, and make a vote, and I think we'd know which way that would go. The other, the other part of this is, you know, is the planning commission interested in doing anything to change this? Or do we just, I'm kind of also seeing that the planning commission is leaning towards letting it roll a few years and see how this project, these projects project, these projects play out and see if then there's a way to change the code. But there's lots of other ways this can go. I'm just trying to keep everybody moving in a, in a direction that it seems like you're going, so just kind of...
So, let's get it formalized. I'm going to start on the left. Commissioner Huggins.
We're not to vote yet.
It's, it's not about a vote. I'm just going to, I'm just going to reaffirm what you're asking right now. Do you feel that the code, even though we can do future things in, in the next couple of years, depending on what happens, that the code as specified is sufficient for the current state of what the project compositions are going to be?
Yeah, I'd like to work on, on the thing I proposed and see if there, there's anything in that. But, but, uh, for this particular instance, I'm with, with what we have now.
This particular instance?
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with what the city and the planning commission came up with originally.
Commissioner Johnson?
I would second in totality what Commissioner Huggins has stated, including his idea.
Commissioner Freiburger?
Well, I think, uh, like what John's...
Let's just repeat ourselves exactly.
John said that tighten up that parking definition if we can at some point to kind of clarify that, but otherwise, yeah, no.
And Commissioner Penno, I think you were crystal clear.
I'm, I'm pretty sure I was. Thank you.
Okay, so I'm just reaffirming everything that you just went around the room to get it back on record because we want people to feel that they were heard, okay, and we discussed it to the limits, really. So, I personally don't believe we need to revisit it. I, we put a lot of time, and there was a lot of input as far as how those numbers were constructed. So, to come back after things and say, "I want a little bit more," I think the pot's pretty sweet myself.
So, I guess I'm hearing that, you know, we should tighten up, you know, what, uh, what shared parking arrangement as written in the current code means. Um, so, the question is, and I'm going to move on to your, your segment here in a moment, um, do we want to do that now, or do we bring that up as a, a different point, a different project?
So, that isn't an actual piece in the UVMU now?
Well, right now, it says...
That vagueness isn't in there anywhere?
There, there is a little vagueness in the UVMU code right now because it says, this is quote from the current existing code, "New development may utilize a shared parking arrangement subject to review and approval by the planning director."
I'm good with the way that's written because they still have to come to you, right?
Except for it's a little vague. Like, I know, I know what my intent was, that, you know, if it means be shared between...
So, you would change...
A parking lot next, in a, in a joining, a joint, a...
So, you would fix that just in the normal all-around parking code where it's vague, you would fix it there? Is that what you're saying?
That's not what I'm saying, but that's a really good idea.
I, I would think that that would be easier.
I like that.
Thank you.
Want to pull up the, the current code and see if there's a good spot to put in it, the parking code? We'll take a quick peek at that while we continue our discussion. You want to use the bigger one? So, the, the last part of the discussion would be, um, do, is the planning commission interested in, in pursuing something that would allow the developer to, um, recapture some of that unused parking, if there is unused parking? Are, are you, are you interested in putting something in the code that would allow the developer to monitor their parking situation over a series of years and then have the ability to, if they can prove that there's more parking than necessary, come back to the city count, come back to the
Planning.
Planning department and say, "Hey, look..."
Specifically, UVMU though.
We need to set that, we need to set that criteria. It isn't just going to be like they decide to set the criteria. That would be for a meeting for a different day.
So, yeah, that, that's kind of where I'm going with this is, so if, if you wanted to do something like that, that'd be, that'd be a big, big change to figure out those parameters. How many years?
What percentage?
You know, what do they have to do to, to, to prove all, that they're, they don't, that they have too much parking and all of that? Um, and so, if you're interested in doing, putting something like that in the code, my preference would be that it wouldn't be part of this proposal because we kind of want to move on with their proposal, but we could.
No, it's a matter of prioritization. We still haven't finished the downtown, uh, design guidelines. We have a for-sale sign on the burned-out, uh, what do you call it? Parcel where, where the, the one building was.
The U.S.
Yeah, we, we need to get back to where we left off because this actually, between the re-zones and everything, we're, we're pushed back like four weeks, four months from where we were actually at, right? So, since they're under development right now, the guidelines right now, well, the requirements right now for parking, I think we're all pretty clear that let's leave it as is with the option of revisiting, uh, having a process in the future to revisit the density on that. But right now, that, that, that should be maybe sometime this summer or whatever. Let's finish off what we, what we had on the plate. I feel like we were skipping around a bit.
Does, does the rest of the planning commission share that idea of, uh, look at that later?
I'm in agreement with putting off the idea of Pats, but I think it's a good idea that we should look into.
May I please?
Yes.
So, before we get too far
Yeah, yeah, I'm definitely not saying drop it.
From what Penno has said. So, in off-street parking and loading, our code there, 1736-060. I'll just read what we have. Parking and loading facilities may be provided cooperatively, either through private arrangements or by means of a fee-in lieu public parking program administered by the city. If the uses party to such a cooperative provision generate their peak parking demand at different times, the zoning administrator may reduce the total parking requirement from that which would be required separately to a number representative of the greatest demand likely to occur at any one time.
So...
That's for public parking, right? Yes?
Yes, fee-in lieu of public parking.
36060, cooperative provisions?
Yes.
Says through either private arrangements or by means of, uh, fee-in lieu public parking programs administered by the city. Who's our zoning administrator? John, is that, that's what I thought. Got to stick.
So, yeah, maybe we address that section.
Yeah, this would be a good spot. Yeah.
That's 36...
060.
3606. Oh, yep.
And then we'll put it on, it's, uh, if we want to continue with Pat's idea, do, does it seem, uh, we've heard from two planning commission members, I would like to work on some other things in the meantime and, and come back to that later. Is that, I'm seeing nodding heads.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we should provide closure on this for...
On what? On the parking or finishing the downtown requirements that we just dropped?
Oh, no, no, on, on the parking because the developer, you know, is, is waiting to hear to, potentially to move forward with...
Okay, so what you're proposing is to line up all that criteria of what?
No.
Okay.
No, just, um, to visit Pat's suggestion later.
Oh, okay. I thought you meant getting into the deep and heavies of, oh, no, 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 no. Yeah, let's tie this up. Absolutely. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
This will be potentially a long process.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. I misunderstood. I thought you said you wanted to go right into that. I was like, oh, no, we can't do that. We've got to keep downtown historic. Yeah, but I next go around. Yeah, let's, give him a...
And the only reason I'm asking is because as staff, if there's going to be, if, if the planning commission wanted to see changes to what BYK and, and the RJ group has presented for you to review at the next public hearing, then I'd need to do that.
We got it.
But I, thank you for clarifying. We're going to work on fixes to, uh, the current definition of shared parking arrangement at a later date, and we're going to visit Pat's recommendation to allow a method for them to recapture their parking for amenity use at a later time also.
Yes.
So, that about, that's, that's what I wanted to accomplish with this topic. So, we have some marching orders to move forward and know what we're going to do. We'll have a public hearing at the January meeting on this, on this proposal. So, thank you. If, if there's more discussion, go for it.
I think we were real clear. I think we're, everybody's on the same page and everybody had their say. So, I would like to go on to discussion and information items, and before we do that, I would like to wish everyone an awesome, happy holidays. And this is the darkest day of the year, and it's already going to be four seconds lighter tomorrow. So, is there anything anybody would like to discuss?
You start this in. Uh, I just wanted to also say Merry Christmas to everybody and Happy Holidays. And, and also, I want to apologize. I've missed a couple of meetings in a row here due to conflict with school-related stuff, my soccer program, and, and I'm hoping that that's not going to be a problem in 2022. I've talked to them about trying to schedule games on Mondays and Wednesdays like they used to instead of Tuesdays and Thursdays. So, anyway, bear with me as, as we work through COVID complications. And anyway, have a great, have a great New Year, you guys.
So, with that, you're an important part here. You're our historian. You're, you're like the kind of guy that has that backward-looking view as to why things worked and didn't work. So, we miss you when you're not here. So, if you could prioritize a little bit?
Yeah, I've also talked to them about, about, that if, if it's going to remain on Tuesdays and Thursdays, that, that my assistant will do the games and, because it's always games. That's the problem.
I would like you to make this a priority.
So, have him do the coaching, and I will just, and I will miss some, or at least make it fair. So...
Okay.
Because this year was bad. I think it was four that I missed because of that. And, and in past years, it's always, only been one in July for, maybe for vacation or something.
Commissioner Huggins, we appreciate your commitment to this community and would absolutely like you sitting in that seat, or you can pick wherever you'd like. Thank you.
Also, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to everybody. I hope everybody has a wonderful holiday. Um, one comment, I wanted to thank the staff for the memo on today's action item. I thought it was really well done, um, very readable, very helpful. So, thank you to, I'm not sure who exactly wrote it or if it was a team effort, but to the staff in general, thank you very much. I really appreciated it. Um, one question that I do have for you, though, is there's beginning to be a lot of chatter about this upcoming legislative session and the concept of doing away with single-family zoning. And I wanted to know if you, just if you had heard anything. I mean, you don't necessarily have to pontificate if you don't want it, or...
I've read it in the paper. We have not, um, we have not received any, any information about it from the Association of Washington Cities. They usually provide a legislative breakdown. They're the, they're our lobbying organization, and, um, we, they're very, they do a really good job of keeping, of, of engaging the cities in, um, in these types of matters. So, that legislation is, you know, legislation hasn't started. So, I haven't seen it. We understand it exists. I'm looking nervously forward to seeing what it says because it's a big change. And, uh, it's going to be a very active legislative session as far as Housing and Growth Management Act stuff. So, um, I, I do intend to, to keep my finger on that pulse and, um, keep you as updated as possible. It's a little tricky because you know how ledge items go. Like, one week, it, it looks like it's going, there's going to, something's going to pass lock, stock, and barrel, and two weeks later, it's, it's completely dead as a doornail or is changed in such vast form that it's not even recognizable. So, I like to keep a finger on the pulse without living and dying by every, every change because it changes a lot.
Yeah. And from the concept of what I've read so far, which is probably the same thing as you have, and I'll go on the public record and say I'm grossly opposed to it, but we'll see how it all shakes out. You're absolutely right. I mean, a week in politics is an eternity, so we'll see.
Danielle?
Just, Happy Holidays.
Nothing. There you go.
Merry Christmas, everybody.
Okay. And ho, ho to you. Jonathan Cole, thank you so much. Seriously. I mean, we, we actually get the effort that is put in down here and, uh, just the way that this city is run, taking, be inclusive with not only the development community, but the citizens and everybody else. I, I got to tell you, I've never seen a community function like this where everybody has a say. And at the end of the day, you know, you can't always get what you want, but people get what they need. So, with that, I'll take a motion for adjournment. Somebody?
I'll move.
Second?
We have, we have a first and a second. Meeting adjourned at 8:17. Thank you. Merry Christmas, everyone.